Thank you, Mrs. Morrison. Also, definitely a wonderful shout out to all of the folks at Topeka High and great action in their students. It's another example of our students to be focused on leadership in a more capable way than many adults. First action item, adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of a supplemental personnel report.
Motion, seconded discussion on the motion. If there is now, I think we're ready to vote.
Online vote should be open. All votes are in. Motion carries now, Ms. Lee.
Excellent. And as we move on to our next item, the school highlights, as Ms. Krueger comes forward, I'll say I meant to kick off the meeting and say that our thoughts and our prayers are definitely with our superintendent, who's a home tenant to family illness. I'm privileged, of course, to sit next to my two-hour deputy superintendent. Thanks to all of the stakeholders.
Our first school highlight tonight is Student of the Month, and I'll invite Ms. Rebecca Morrison from Topeka High up.
Good evening. President Woods, Vice President Morrison, members of the board, and members of the leadership team, it is my honor tonight to present to you Ms. Erica Self, Topeka High School of Trojan, and the TPS Student of the Month for November. And you don't get us up there while I talk about you. Erica is the daughter of Gordon Self and Athena and Daya. You both stand to be recognized as well. Erica truly represents the finest of THS. She's sixth in a class of 400 students, if that's what Daya looked, and she carries a 4.44 weighted GPA. She's a four-year member of our soccer team. She has multiple All-State, All-City, and All-League honors. She played with, I don't even know how long it's been since we had a women's soccer team play in the state tournament, they played in the state tournament last year, and she was one of that team's leaders. She plans to attend college next year and wants to participate in soccer at the collegiate level. To prepare for this, she started competing in powerlifting as a sophomore. She's been an individual overall state champion. She also participated in volleyball for three years before deciding that cross-country would keep her in shape for soccer, so this year she did that. She's a three-year member of our student government organization, and she's currently the all-school president. She's a vice president of National Honor Society, and a two-year member, a four-year member of National English Honor Society, and a three-year member and officer, I believe, parliamentary, of New Alpha Theta. In addition to her excellence as a student and an athlete, she's involved in her community, through involvement in her church's mission work, serves as a lifeguard, has been a volunteer for Stormont Bell Hospital, and was actually an intern here at the Burnett Center for Marie Carter. We would love to present Erica with a gift that represents the college of her choice. Since she hasn't chosen yet, we don't know what that is. So we have given her a Visa card, so that when she makes that decision between all the schools that are recruiting her, she's going to be able to go to the bookstore and buy something, acknowledging that choice and remembering that in the process. So it is my honor again to present to you this evening, Ms. Erica Self.
Hi, I'm Erica. I just wanted to say thank you because I think it's been a pleasure to be part of the Topeka Public Schools, and I feel like my education has prepared me for further education in college and then hopefully after that, as I want to be a doctor. So I just want to say that Topeka High, I love it, and I love all the opportunities that it's created for me, and I love being part of such a historic school, and with so much diversity. And I just think that there are so many worthy kids at this school that could have got this opportunity and this honor, but choosing me, I'm just very thankful for that. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Kurt.
Well, it's always a thrill to have the Senior of the Month here to honor, and it's just exciting for us. And you've got a great student, you've got a great future, and as we say, the new phrase or the old phrase is being revived here, and you can get there from here. So whatever you want to do, whatever you want to be, we firmly believe you're going to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Well, definitely your resume is very impressive, and I'm just so glad that you have, I just wonder if you're really enjoying your time in Topeka Public Schools, but I couldn't help but look over at the faces of your parents and see their expression, and to me, that's priceless. And I definitely wish you the best in your future.
Just one question, and maybe it's none of my business, but any rivalry between you and Cooper? I mean, I know he was a great student and also powerlifter and wrestler.
But he wasn't state champion.
I do think your brother finished second in the nation, and sister did it well.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there is some rivalry, but it's always just friendly competition, and we always support each other. And I just think that without him, I wouldn't have come this far, because he's always pushed me.
I hesitate to share this story, but my daughter is Cooper's classmate, and I've been classmates since their grade school, probably. She came home one day when she was in Topeka High and told the story of how there was a competition between Cooper and another student who's a football player at Kansas State now, and they had to do push-ups. And everybody was betting on them, and this guy was a world-class, not a world-class, but a very prominent powerlifter, and Cooper just smoked him. I forget how many more he did than Mo Gary, but it wasn't close.
We've heard that story a lot, too.
He might feel a little cooler, though.
Maybe not.
Well, so Erica, what kind of medicine do you want to practice?
Well, I actually want to be an optometrist.
Oh, wow, okay. What drew you to that field?
Well, I've had glasses or eye corrections since I was in third grade, and so I've always been interested in the eye doctor. And when I was thinking about different fields that I wanted to study when I got older, I always was interested in the medical field, and then I wanted to pick something I was really interested in, so the eye, it's very interesting.
Do you want to practice more so in research?
Yes, like I work in the practice.
So is somebody just a few years ago paid? Best money ever paid, corrective surgery, in the eye. Those are, I have a lot of other stuff, the knee's correct, but the eye surgery. I'm always wondering, you know, what will be the next big breakthrough, and once I do it at that age where I'll need it again, and I'm not going to be a candidate because of the age, and will they come up with the next kind of surgery? I'm sorry. There you go, something like that, you know. Well, certainly it's a pleasure to have you here. You're, as Ms. Johnson said, your resume is impressive. It's, we are impressed as always, but we are not surprised by what we, your track record or what we always see from Topeka High. It's definitely our pleasure to have you here today. Congratulations on being recognized as the Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
Thanks. Oh, any words from your parents or anything they want to add? Because I know you really want to talk.
No, we very much appreciate this, and we've had four children. I was saying, she's our last at Topeka High. We had her first as a freshman in 1993, so we've had quite a span, and we're very pleased, and we believe that our experience with the public schools has prepared our children quite well, and we're very proud supporters of Topeka Schools. And we thank you very much for recognizing Erica, our best and probably our...
Tell you, you can't put that in person.
Our next school highlight, I'm going to call up Pamela Johnson-Buck, the Deputy Director of the Topeka Public Schools Foundation.
Mr. President, board members, and staff, it's always a pleasure to come and speak regarding the sports park. We give our annual update, but before I do that, though, I'd like to take a moment just to say congratulations on having a wonderful American Education Week. There have been things that have been seen every day this week, and it's quite exhilarating to see that you can get there from here. One of the things we want to point out is that this year, our 30-year anniversary for the foundation's existence, we gave $300 to each school in Topeka Public Schools, which came to almost $8,000, a little short of that. The other thing I'd point out, that we just had our grant patrol, and in that grant patrol, we were able to award 38, I think it's on there, maybe it was 35, but almost $32,000 to Topeka Public School educators that wrote grants. So we're trying to do our part in terms of helping and assisting Topeka Public Schools and educators that are here, but wanted to talk about that during American Education Week, because so often we are not able to honor the educators that we have here that clearly help develop people like Erica Self, who is very much impressive. And congratulations to you as parents for having a number of children, it appears, that have been quite successful. With that, I'd like to ask Steve Page to come forward, and as he's coming forward, Steve is the Senior Vice President of BOK Financial. He is also the Chair of the Investment Committee. The other person with us this evening is James Walden, who is Director of Portfolio Management for Clayton Financial Services. Clayton Financial are the ones that do the investments for us and have done a wonderful job. With that, Steve, if you'd give the update.
Thank you, Pam. Members of the board, administrators, teachers, students, everyone else who might be here. I'm here on behalf of the Investment Committee for the Topeka Sports Park and Education Fund for the school foundation. And I should mention the other members of the Investment Committee. Of course, Scott is a member of our committee, as well as Kelly Newkirk, Janice Ellie, and of course Pam, and Jim Walden, and Barbara Heller from Clayton Financial. So with that, there's supposed to be something up here that I could talk about further. We're going to show about three or four charts, and then take questions. The first chart just is a bar chart illustrating the growth of the sports park from the time of inception back in 2005. And basically, the assets in that fund have more than doubled, almost tripled really from 2005, when they were at $640,000. And as of 10/31/2016, we had a million 722,817 in the sports park fund. You'll see a little debit in 2015, and that was, of course, when we had a distribution in order to lay the new turf for the football field at Hunter Sports Park. Anyone have any questions, feel free to answer, ask them while the chart is up. This is the Education Fund, and it's, of course, much smaller, and hasn't experienced quite the growth, simply because it hasn't had the number of contributions that we've seen for the sports park fund. Nevertheless, it has moved from $147,000 to over $212,000 as of October 31 of this year. This is a portfolio overview, and I know it's not easy to read. I'll try to hit the highlights here. This is the sports park, and this information is as of October 31. And as of October 31, this represents the assets that are under management with Clayton Financial. So if you look at the ending value of $1,681,41, that's less than what we just told you at $1,722, but the other amount is, the difference is sitting in a checking account in use for expenses. For the year-to-date, we've had gains in the sports park fund of $78,286, and since inception, and inception here is November 30 of 2013, so basically, almost three years during the period of time when it has been managed. Prior to that time, this fund was not managed, it was basically a matter of certificates of deposits. So since the time Clayton Financial has been managing it, it has grown by $174,159. If you look at the investments, about 70% is invested in equity funds or common stock funds for growth, and 30% invested in fixed income. Year-to-date return, if you're into that, is almost 5% as of October 31, and since inception, it's 3.6%. Any questions on this slide? Next slide is the same kind of report, but it's just for the Education Fund. Year-to-date, the Education Fund is up $9,535, $16,340 since inception, which again was November 30 of 2013. This fund is managed more conservatively, simply because it's a much smaller fund, and we aren't seeing the contributions in this fund than we see in the sports park fund. So basically, it's about a 50-50 split between common stocks or equities and fixed income. And I should mention for both these accounts, the investments are entirely in mutual funds, exchange-traded funds, not in individual securities. And they are also invested in a diversified group of mutual funds managed, again, by Clayton Financial. Year-to-date, this portfolio is up about 4.7% since inception, just under 3% average annual return for this fund. With that, I'm going to close and open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions?
Just like to publicly acknowledge and thank you for your service on the committee. Mr. Page is the Chair of the committee, and we meet quarterly, and he does a wonderful job communicating with rest of committee members, organizing things, and leading the committee, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Privilege to have you on the committee as well.
Okay. No additional questions. I just thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Mickelson's comments says, and I know that board members and folks who are the Investment Committee pay so much, and you probably don't need our thanks, but...
Well, it's a privilege to work on behalf of, in any capacity, for those students at Topeka. Thank you.
All right, we have one more school highlight tonight. I'd like to call up Ms. Christine Saunders from Abidale West Elementary School. This year, we started a new thing where we look at the attendance for our schools across the district, and each month, the school with the highest attendance for the month is awarded this beautiful traveling trophy to display at their school for the month. So for the month of October, it was Abidale West Elementary with an attendance rate of 97.48%, so congratulations.
Thank you. I don't really have anything to say, we just have great kids and great families bringing their kids every day.
Ms. Morrison.
Ms. Saunders, have you done anything differently this year to encourage the attendance, or has attendance at Abidale West been nice up until now?
Attendance at Abidale West has always been high. We consistently have 96% or better ADA every school year since I've been there for the last six years. But we do focus on attendance, so we make a lot of parent contacts. If we have kids who are frequently tardy, or they leave early, or they're missing, we take that extra step and make sure to contact the parents, and send letters, and talk to them in person about how important it is for their child to be in school.
That's very true. We looked at the statistics, and children that succeed are the ones that are over 90 to 95% attendance, so thanks for that effort.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. Again, before we move on, we definitely thank all of our folks who are with us for school highlights. It's great to have our team and honor such... Let's, yeah, let's go ahead and actually discuss the proclamation that we're going to do now, so, but I know that Ms. Brown really does want to stay for the rest of our money.
Well, this week is American Education Week, but it's also School Psychology Awareness Week, and so Ms. Brown and her team are here tonight to be recognized for that. And here in a second, there'll be a slideshow running with all of them on it, and we have a proclamation acknowledging the week that we'll present to you, but if you'd like to come forward and say a few words about school psychology.
President Woods, board members, thank you so much for honoring us this evening. During School Cycle Awareness Week, as you, if you've been on the board for a while, you know that we typically honor staff from other departments, social work, counseling, administration, and teachers. But this year, I would like to honor my department with the Possibilities in Action Award. Because of their Herculean efforts in covering four vacant positions along with their present workload. They look kind of tired, don't they? They strapped on their boots this year and went to work. And I have to say, I looked at some data before I came this evening, and we've completed 98.5% of our initial evaluations on time this year. And when you consider their workload, that's pretty darn impressive. And they're also trying to serve the mental health needs of the students of Topeka Public Schools alongside their counselors and social work colleagues. So we also want to thank you for your support in raising our salaries, which will help us in our recruiting efforts. So thank you, school psychologists, for your dedication and hard work. We celebrate you.
I'm so pleased that you're recognizing your staff. I mean, and we want to say thank you. We know how difficult it's been this year to be four positions down, so if you can scrape up some more people to come join you, find them out there, it's here in this way, because we really do need them, and we are real appreciative. I think everybody on this board is very painfully aware of the mental health issues that we face, and you're the ones who are there to try to help us through this, so I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Is Amanda Arnold here? Did she?
No.
There's a school in my hometown named Amanda Arnold Elementary.
Is that in Manhattan?
Yes. I didn't know the significance of that. Maybe she's got some other history you should know about.
Well, so I just would echo what Ms. Kurt said. I still remember, I never forget, unfortunately, a few times in which we've had tragedies happen, and we've had our team jump into a rapid response. I mean, some of them, you know, honestly, could have used you guys, you know, addressing us and our issues after a couple of those that were so horrendous and painful. But if ever there were any doubt that, you know, we need you all, and all we need to do is march somebody into one of our schools and watch them interact with their school psychs, so I've got the chance to see a school psychic at my kid's school in action, never having to address me or any of my...
That's good to hear.
So we do definitely thank you for what you're doing. I'm definitely glad you can let the word hit the street that salaries have been increased, and so for folks who want that job, there are those four that are in there over you have been down, and we really appreciate all the good work you did while you were down. But thank you so much, and it's our pleasure to approve this proclamation today. We have it listed as a consent item, so we will actually approve it along with the other consent items, and it will hang around in every building in the district as we recognize its mark.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Can we have them stand for the usher?
Yeah, you can have them stand and have them, you know, introduce them, tell us who they are.
I'm Kara Sheaks, I'm at Whitson Preschool.
I'm Teresa Walters, I'm at Scott Elementary. I'm eighth grader French, and I'm at Topeka West High School.
I'm Judy Ward, I'm a school psychologist at Will and Stephanie Allen Elementary.
I'm Stephanie Avlan, I'm a psychologist at Landen, Eisenhower, and Heart of Rock Elementary.
I'm Stephanie Gator, I'm a school psychologist at State Street and Long Island Elementary.
I'm Jennifer Stichel, I'm the school psychologist for Highland Park Central Meadows and Park and Green Elementary.
to address me or any of my...
That's good to hear.
So, we do definitely thank you for what you're doing. I'm definitely glad you can let it, the word hit the street, that salaries have been increased. And so, for folks who want a job, there are those four that are in there over you, you've been down. And we really appreciate all the good work you did while you were down. But thank you so much, and it's our pleasure to approve this proclamation today. We have it listed as a consent item. So, we will actually approve it along with the other consent items, and it will hang around in every building in the district as we recognize its mark.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Can we have them stand for my question?
Yeah, you can have them stand and have them, you know, introduce them, tell us who they are, where they are.
I'm Kara Sheeks, and I'm at Woodson Preschool.
I'm Teresa Walters. I am at Scott Elementary. I'm eighth grade French, and I'm at Topeka West High School.
I'm Judy Warren, and I'm a school psychologist at Will and South of West Elementary.
I'm Stephanie Avon, and I'm a psychologist at Landen, Eisenhower, and Hardaway Rock Elementary.
I'm Stephanie Vayner, and I'm a school psychologist at State Street and Long Island Elementary.
I'm Jennifer Stichel, and I'm a school psychologist for Highland Park Central Meadows Elementary.
I'm Abby Olson, and I work about preschool population and at Scott.
Here in Darty, if I helped fill in this year, I'm at Robinson.
Brian Candy, I'm at Topeka High, and also Phil Hannah Robinson.
This is my secretary, administrative assistant. She runs the department. Todd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think someone's key. Yeah. So, it definitely was fun. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. I believe we have none for the evening. We are ready to dispose of our business like it seems.
Public comments, I appreciate that.
You're late.
I'm late.
Now, it's so the one...this is way against the rules, and my colleagues may slap me back. You are late. However, we would definitely like to hear what you have to say if you will promise that you will keep it as brief as possible within three minutes, because we're kind of on a tight schedule for today.
Less than three minutes.
I had to get...I had to take any opportunity to give you a hard time, too.
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate it.
Mr. President, board members, I do want to thank you for this opportunity for, just to perhaps some very brief comments. I'm tardy, and I just read this. I haven't read it in a long time, so I'm behind. That's part of my time. But I'm here to, first of all, really congratulate Dr. Anderson for a super job she's been doing since she's been here. She's not here tonight, but I wanted to know that I certainly appreciate the work she's doing, the viability in the community, and certainly it's appreciative. And I think it's getting the attention of people in our communities. I appreciate that. Secondly, I want to commend the Topeka High staff for the march by the students here, and I think it was yesterday, I believe. I think that's commendable because I'm in the midst of a lot of things along those lines right now, and to give those kids their constitutional right to get out and march, protest in a peaceful way, I thought it was commendable. And secondly, that's the other thing that I just wanted to talk with briefly, because we are in a very divided state in our nation today, and because of that, there's just lots of things going on. And many of these issues that has divided us, they are divisive to the point that they're taking shapes in our colleges and our schools. I would hope the board is taking a very close look at this and putting in place any possible mechanism that could deal with these issues proactively, because I don't think it's something that will be short-lived. I think these issues are going to be with us a long time. And one of the concerns I have, and I'm busy with university, we'll be having a meeting here later on in the week to talk about these issues and try to come up with solutions. But I don't want to see our students' education disrupted. I think the constitution of all students must be protected, and there are elements there that will disrupt our kids from learning. I hope the board will be very proactive in putting something in place to deal with it. So, appreciate the evidence going forth now. I'll probably be back before this board at another time to talk about some of the issues that we're really trying to get our arms around to deal with this situation, because this is a chronic situation. It's not over, and I hope that you guys really do everything you can to make sure that our schools have the proper reinforcement you need to deal with these kinds of racial incendiary issues that will happen. They will happen. Lastly, I got a call from a parent from one of our middle schools, and she indicated that the N-word is just used frequently. I don't know about it, but I hope that this will be something to look into. I can tell you, I hear it frequently in front of the house, and it's disturbing because I hope it's not playing into the stereotype of what we're seeing happening with these racial remarks that are just going in our schools. So, appreciate your time, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The one question I will have is after this meeting, if you wouldn't mind sharing your comments with one, someone in the administration, just so we get kind of the details and specifics in that way, looking at the concern that you raised. Thank you, sir. Excellent. Okay. Business by consent.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the items of business by consent as presented, and authorizes the Board President and Superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the Board of Education.
Motion is seconded in discussion on the motion. Now, in scene, I believe we are ready to vote.
Vote should be open. All votes are in. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So, we are on to our Superintendent's Report. Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one announcement I'd like to make. Hopefully, the board received the email from our Communications Department about a very special event that's going to take place tomorrow at 11 o'clock at Sheldon at Stark. We have one of our great business partners, advisors at SELL, is teaming up with Payless Shoes to go to Sheldon and provide coats and shoes for all 221 students who attend there. So, it's going to be a marvelous event. I'd like to thank any board members who are available to attend that and watch. A lot of smiles that you're going to see on the faces of those young kids as they get new coats and new shoes.
Thank you, sir. That's...that definitely isn't a decided thing. Board to that, I'm definitely trying to... Okay. Our next item on the agenda, our action items are heading in 19.1. We have policies that are back up.
Yes, these are the policies that were given to you last, at the last meeting for first reading and fully explained then. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We did pull policy 1031 at your request, so these are the ones that move forward for final action.
Any questions or comments or thoughts from any board members? Was there any feedback that...
Didn't receive any additional comments from Stephanie, no. So, I believe they were okay on the policies, and then I also have given you the regulations that would accompany that policy that will not go into effect until after the next board meeting. I'd like to ask you to have a motion to approve these on final action.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you, Third Secretary Reverend Williams. Motion is seconded in discussion on the motion.
Your own mind notes should be open. All votes are in. Motion carries unanimously.